In order we go here.
Shaner. Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Whatever.
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in visible light with a hand of justice.
Okay, we're gonna do interviews for Effective Fiscal Public Policy, Wendy LaCroy. Like I told her, we got an order, Jacob, okay? All right. Go ahead, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Uh, I'm Wendy LaCroy. I currently are well, previously, the last three years I've served on the committee with Ms. Shaner. I am both a resident, a mother of three girls. We all live in Sioux City. I own a small business and I cater to other small businesses. They're both keeping financial accounting needs. I think that I have a unique perspective from both of the, both personal and professional. And I'd like to continue to offer my skill set to give feedback on the Effective Fiscal Policy Committee.
Okay.
We need to utilize an acronym.
Now, you're good.
Don't we?
Yeah, you should make it letters.
Yes.
Questions?
Thank you for re-up.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate having you on that committee already. I think we all work very well together.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good discussions and we get to the bottom of what our, we're tasked with.
Yep, I think we're ha, we've had a lot of, I don't know, say, turnover, I guess, some new people.
Had a couple retired.
Yeah, and it's been, it's been cool to see that evolve.
Good, we'll keep up the good work.
I think your background is helpful, for sure, so thanks for reapplying.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll let you know, Jacob.
Again, Jacob Wondersheid, um, do I need to say my address?
No.
Okay.
Yes, 'cause the clerk.
Five, six, zero, zero lines, Court Sioux City, Iowa. As a executive director of the Food Bank of Suland and having a master's degree in public administration, I think that I could be assistance with looking at those policies and committees and helping review those at the food bank for the last three years. As the executive director, I am in charge of our budgeting process and work to strive to, to provide Suland with the best that we can do. I really like that type of work and working and serving the city of Sioux City, I think, is, is really important to me as, as the position I have now. And I think being part of the committee will just help further that, that goal of helping the city.
Great, I think you're certainly qualified and you're enthusiastic, you showed that to us, so I'm glad you made the application for this committee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Next is the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, Glenn Moore, Jr. Glenn, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Hate getting in front of the microphone, a lot of things happen. I'm actually recommitting myself back to the Inclusive Committee. I run a clean and sober house that just relocated to 15th and Nebraska. Right now, I'm focusing on breaking the barriers within that and also try to, this year, focus on breaking the barriers in the religious aspect to try to get us to come together a little bit more, focus on doing some community projects as a whole versus, you know, one specific religion. And, uh, that's pretty much it, you know? Just focusing on, you know, excited on what the Inclusive Committee has to do this year again and, you know, the things that we've accomplished throughout the couple of years, a few years that I've been part of it.
Good. Questions? So this would be the religious community?
Yes.
Category that would be fulfilled?
Yes.
With Glenn being on, okay.
I was concerned because that, and I brought up the same thing before the meeting, just to be safe, because it was, it was marked for the NAACP and that is currently filled by Angel Wallace.
Correct.
Through the end of this year. So I wanted to make sure that we made a note of that. I think you've done fantastic things, um, serving the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee and I'm, I'm really excited that you're re-upping because I always see you out in the community and I can't think of anybody better.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Glenn.
We're gonna go now to the Consent Agenda Items Three through thirteen E, considering the pass unanimously, unless a separate roll call vote's requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it. State your name and address for the record. You want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the Consent Agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the January twenty-second City Council Minutes. Four is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by adopting an updated job description for maintenance repair worker. Five is a resolution approving the request to revise the federal functional classification map. Six is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. A is a motion appointing Alex Johnson to the Environmental Advisory Board. B is a motion appointing, re-appointing Samuel Avery to the Parks and Skywalk Board, System Board of Trustees. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution adopting the restoring empowerment by maintaining and improving neighborhood programs in the rescinding previous resolutions.
Mayor, just a brief comment on that. I think this was a tremendous catch because we have so many programs that kind of overlap. So I don't see Jill here, but I wanted to say thank you for, for this catch because I feel like that'll clear up a lot of confusion. I get questions all the time about where a network program ends and where another one begins and, and I think that this will really streamline the process. So that was a good one.
You didn't streamline the name very streamlined, but I guess the rest of it'll be okay. B is a resolution approving a grant application to IDOT's Revitalize Iowa Sound Economy Program for the construction of road infrastructure to support a proposed water park. C one is a resolution authorizing an application to the SIMCO Metropolitan Planning Organization Carbon Reduction Program. C two is a resolution approving the Iowa Transportation Alternative Set-A-Side Program applications to SIMCO Metropolitan Planning Organization for fiscal year 2027 funding.
Hold for a roll. Which one?
Eight A.
Thank you.
What do you know that we don't, just keep it, I guess I'm curious.
I don't, I don't think we're bargaining hard enough. I brought some concerns about that initially, before the project was ever started, that that was running into the, the school year and I was concerned what that would do to traffic. Sure enough, it upended traffic, it, it caused a lot of problem and now a lot of the residents on the street feel like the project is done and completed and was left half-finished. Frankly, I, I just don't agree with it.
Just a question, is that something that could be fixed, Matthew? With, so with the deferral of the item?
We could defer it and ask for an adjustment, adjustment to the rate the JEO Consulting is requesting. I think that that would be a good move. Personally, I, I feel like the administration and observation of, of the crews is inadequate if they've gone this far over on a project.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. Most of this, the schedule for this project has been deemed dictated by the contractor, not by the consultant that's watching it. They're the ones that choose to, when they start and when they don't.
They're fifty, fifty days over, correct?
Yes, or more.
But I think what Gordon's saying, I think, is that that's the contractor, it's on the contractor for taking that overage. That JEO is just, they have to be a part, part of the consulting of the project, therefore their, their job is done essentially when the contractor's job is done.
Correct.
But my problem is always fourteen hundred bucks a day we pay an engineer and I, I know you guys are unbelievable valuable, but fourteen hundred dollars a day? That's a lot of money. I, I just don't get why, they're not out there every hour of every, of that day, but yet we pay them fourteen hundred bucks a day. I'd never agree with any of these, but I'm glad you wanted to roll call vote because I'll gladly accommodate that.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
No.
Shaner?
Aye.
B is a resolution approving a service provider agreement with Suland District Health for the Lead Hazard Reduction Program. C is a resolution approving a service provider agreement with K&amp;K Mobile Storage for the Lead Hazard Reduction Program. D is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Simmarina for repair and reservations of the Fire Department Rescue Boat.
I did have one question on that one. Chief, the only question I wanted to really pose was, I know some of the vendors you had sent this out to had said, you know, their plate's too full currently, but just wanted to look at it, you know, in future years or their schedule would open up in 2025. Didn't know if there was, if this was kind of in line with the price you were looking at or thought it would make sense to push to 2025 and we'd be able to save money or...
I think Spiro can probably speak to this a little better, but I think that price-wise, we were actually pretty happy with what we found here.
Yeah, the two vendors I talked, Spiro LeHulles, Purchasing Manager, the two vendors I did talk to just said they didn't have time this year and they'd be willing to, you know, give us a quote for next year, but I think that was something that the Fire Department done before the upcoming season.
And I understand that, I guess my question is more the, if they would be interested in bidding next year, if we would be saving on that end or if we thought this was a pretty competitive price that we insisted on moving forward this year.
Yeah, they did not give us any numbers for next year.
When did, when will this work be done?
I believe they're supposed to be done by Memorial Day.
Yeah, this, yet this winter.
Contract says, I believe it says May twenty-fifth, about.
How many times you used the boat last year?
Probably around a dozen calls. Of course, they train with it a lot.
Okay, all right.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
E is a resolution approving a renewal option number two to the service provider agreement with Dakota Traffic Services for the Street Pavement, paving and striping project. F is a resolution authorizing a joint cooperation agreement with Suland Economic Development Corporation. Do they automatically get fifty or is this a rolling number like it used to be, they get it when they need it?
Matt Myler, Neighborhood Services, Sioux City. I'm not a hundred percent on this program, but they have to request the funds, so.
Right, if they don't need it, they...
They have to be at a certain amount.
Fourth Street, Section 130, curb and sidewalk improvement project. J is a resolution approving the contract and performance bond with Steve Harris Construction for the South Cecilia Street Reconstruction Project. K is a resolution approving a contract with Ellison Construction for the Seventh Street and Nebraska Street Emergency Pavement Replacement Project. L is a resolution approving an amendment number two to the development and minimum assessment agreements with MG88 Coal Storage and Coal Link Logistics Property at seventy-six oh one Alicia Avenue. M was a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Impact 7G for the Pulaski Water, Pulaski Park Watershed Project. Were we able to get with the Morningside Little League and at least explain what we're doing here?
Aramontang Environmental Services. We have not reached out to them since Saturday, since I got word that we wanted to reach out to them yet. But in our, I did look back at the CIP book to see what was listed in there. That, um, listing or description that was in the CIP book is from like 2021 or 2019.
It's your book, not ours.
Yeah, I know. Well, I inherited that, so, um, yeah, so that was incorrect. So right now, we don't have, it's not in our plans to take out of field at this point. That map on there is incorrect.
Hey. And I just think to the mayor's point then, after today, yeah, just.
Yes, we will.
Reach out and just say you're working through it.
Yep, and I've already talked to Melissa, the contractor, on that and we will reach out and get a meeting going with everybody.
Okay.
Great.
M two is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Impact 7G for the Lead Hazardous Reduction Grant Program Grant. N one is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DJR Engineering for the Highway Seventy-Five Regional Storm Sewer Improvement Project. N two is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DJR for the Highway Seventy-Five North Turn Lanes and New Paving Improvement Project. I would like to have that one pulled. I'm gonna vote no and I'll tell you why. We've, we've already let them do all the preliminary work and now you're obligated without interviewing for this. It's a big project and I just, I don't understand why we don't do what we say we're gonna do in that interview for these type of things, so.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No. Nine are actions relating to property. A is a resolution approving releases of retained easements in the thirteen-hundred block of West Third Street. B is a resolution... Mayor, I need to abstain on that item, conflict of interest. I gotta think, who is this one? Who's, who's the person on this? Can somebody tell me? Archicon Darren Smith? No, I'm okay. B is a resolution accepting the partial lease and grant right-of-way from Magellan Pipeline Company, the property at forty-eight, twelve, forty-sixth Street. Ten are actions authorizing payments. A is a motion approving the allocation of the athletic facility improvement request for capital improvement funding. B is a resolution approving change order number thirteen and authorizing payment to RP Construction for the Airport Water Main Replacement Project. C is a resolution authorizing payment to NEBCON for the Fiber Optic Project. Ten are purchasing, Z is a result, resolution awarding a purchase order to Crouch Recreation for the Headington Park Splash Pad Project. Now that this came in about fifty thousand low, you just gotta go find fifty thousand dollars so they can get a bathroom, right? The total project, you mean?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Mayor, I think we're already at a hundred K, so we're gonna go, go look at doing the bathroom right away.
Good.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. What were, what was the difference again? Is it two? It's this one plus, plus. So four hundred and fifty-two thousand. Right.
Yeah, and we have five hundred and fifty-nine in cash, so we're doing really good.
Restrooms?
Yep.
Thank you. B is a resolution canceling the purchase order issued to Stu Hanson Dodd City Jeep for a Ford F-four-fifty truck. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. Thirteen are boards and commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five, zero. Fourteen, with somebody, I made the motion last time, somebody else can be the bad guy this week. I need a motion, one of the two following applicant, Human Rights Commission, to complete the balance of a three-year term, either Gary Lewis or Terry McGaffin.
I would make a motion to accept Terry McGaffin to that appointment.
Second.
You may vote electronically on this one.
Nice having so many qualified candidates, but it's awful having to change.
Right, it's hard.
That's why I didn't want to do it again, I did it last time. Fifteen's a recommendation of the planning and zoning ordinance dedicating the naming of a portion of an unnamed right-of-way adjacent to seventy-six oh one Alicia Avenue as Alicia Avenue. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item. Petitioner is the city of Sioux City, I'll move first reading. Second. Pretty mundane.
Yeah.
There is no, there's not a hearing. Okay, so we can vote. Passes five, zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Move second, third. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Sixteen's a hearing and ordinance vacating the alley in the north one-half of Morningside Avenue adjacent to fifty-eight-eight, eighty-eight Orleans. The P&amp;Z recommends approval, the petition is the city of Sioux City. I'll move it. Second, public hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Five, over, whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's just cleaning up.
Yeah, cleaning up, okay.
Will you provide your name for the record?
Andrew Blyzer, Planning and Zoning Chair.
Hearing's now closed. Passes five, zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Move it. Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
I'll move second, third. Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Seventeen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning one-nineteen Fairmont Street and one-thirty-one Lynn Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval. Petitioner Dana Amendment fee, I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open.
Uh, there was just some talk, it, it'll be out of the floodplain in there and...
Is that across the street from their existing building?
Uh, more, kinda kitty-corner, but yeah, more or less.
Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? If not, the hearing is closed. Sorry. Passes five, zero, is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Eighteen's a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of South, I'm sorry, I gotta do second, third, I'm like, um, second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Oh God, sorry, Scott.
Waters?
Aye.
Eighteen's a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of South Leonard Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval, the petition is Bradley Smith. Someone else, I'll have to move it.
I'll move it.
Sir, second?
Second.
Anyone to be heard, the public hearing's now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. I have a conflict of interest, not with Brad, but with his company, so I'm gonna say I have a conflict. Is there anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No. I'll move that.
Second. O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Stane.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Stane. Or something.
I'll move, yeah, move second, third.
Can't do that. If it's conflict of interest, I think you can, but make sure. I think we went over this one before, so if it recalculates, then you've got a hundred percent. You're checking if we need five votes to wait? At least four on the waiving of the rules. Well, it doesn't matter, we can wait, so.
I'm having trouble locating it, but I believe it does say that it takes four to wave.
That's fine.
Takes four to wave, no matter what? Okay, then we'll just keep moving then. Nineteen's an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-five point zero-five site development of the NIS code to update requirements for digital display signs and off-premises advertising signs and to repeal the interim sign ordinance. P&amp;Z recommends approval. First consideration was approved on January eighth, second consideration was approved on January twenty-second, is there a motion for third reading? I'll move it. Anyone to be heard?
Second.
No one to be heard?
The only addition or request that I have is there have been multiple conversations, Chris, and you've been a part of it, and Verdi and everyone, um, we've kind of had some different updates. The only thing that I would request is with the viaduct being so in flux and kind of understanding that that will, that situation will evolve and take some time, I would just urge or ask city staff to work with Verdi on when they do get right-of-way, if they have right-of-way, just work to a mutually beneficial solution for those properties.
Chris, managing planning, we did have a meeting with Verdi on Friday, where we sat down and talked about a couple of different issues, the viaduct was one of them.
Yeah.
Once we, like you said, once we know more information exactly where the right-of-way lines will be, final design, we'll work together to come up with some kind of a plan for that corridor that we bring back to council.
Okay, and was also my understanding that you updated the language for the abandoned sign, is that correct?
We provided what that change would be. In our meeting, we did discuss a little bit on the definition of changing that to kind of break out off-premise and on-premise signs, what that definition means for those. That would have to come back to another Planning and Zoning Commission hearing.
Oh yeah, that's right.
City Council. We wouldn't be able to add it.
You're gonna separate that out, I forgot.
Correct.
I apologize.
And that will happen?
Yes, yeah, we've got the language already, so we can schedule the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Yeah, I apologize, you said that.
I think that was a good solution, what you worked out with them. Okay.
Thanks for all your work on that, appreciate it very much, both of you and all of you.
Staff did all the heavy lifting.
Well, I think there were a lot of concerns or thoughts and issues and a lot of interested parties and just gotta kind of find the right balance, I think. And it's never perfect, you know, everything has to evolve, but I think putting people together in a room and kind of discussing those options and different spots, I think, come up with a better solution and see how it goes moving forward.
My follow-up question would be, when would we expect to see the change to the, the stay for abandoned billboards? And when would we see the language updated for, for onsite signage matching what we're requiring for digital displays for offsite signage?
For the abandoned signs, we can schedule that in the February twenty-seventh meeting, which would then come to council on, I believe it's March thirteenth. And we can include some language in there for the on-premise signs as well. That may take a little bit more research, but we can include that.
And then, it, the topic did come up, especially about the viaduct and kind of how our, our verbiage currently relates to how signs are made. And the, the state, as far as putting billboards along the viaduct, once it's, once it's built, is completely open to it. Obviously, they have, they have to apply for a permit through the state, is what was said, but they, they don't have any objections to them possibly upgrading some of the signs to digital signs, uh, but that's something.
Another item we're gonna have to look at with the viaduct is just the height of signs, because the viaduct itself is gonna be higher in spots. Where the signs are today would, you know, essentially be looking down on them, so that's something we're also gonna wanna look at, is just the height along that corridor as well.
Problems to solve.
Thanks, Chris.
Too late, we're voting, but go ahead.
Are you already voting? Well, I'll just sit back down, I was gonna say thank you, so.
No, go ahead, name an ad.
You can say thank you once we're done.
Name an address.
Twenty-four twenty Correctionville Road, David English. I know I met with several, several of you up here, we did meet with staff, but thanks for lending an ear to the new guy in town, I appreciate it. You know, I think we came up with the best solution we could so far, but talking about viaduct, the viaduct, when we get plans would be...
Right.
Okay, thank you for working, thank you. Hearings, twenties, a hearing and resolution ascending to the request of the Wayne Gadberry Revocable Trust to the Sherry, the Sherry Gadberry Revocable Trust and the Max Ivner Credit Shelter Hearings, twenties, a hearing and resolution ascending to the request of the Wayne Gadberry revocable trust to the Sherry, the Sherry Gadberry revocable trust and the Max Eichner credit shelter trust to annex land at Sully Avenue and Andrew Avenue. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, is anyone to be heard? I'd like you to do a report for the council to tell us what a shelter trust is. Credit shelter trust, shelter trust, I've never heard of that one, so I want you to give us a little brief outline. Anyone to be heard?
Credit.
Who can I bill? Hearing is now closed. Five to zero. Twenty-one is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the fire station parking lot repair project. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-two is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs. Passes five zero. Twenty-three is a hearing and resolution approving the plans and specs for the big suit pedestrian bridge crossing project. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero, twenty-four is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the sidewalk program project. Teresa Fitch will provide an update on the funding. Before we move it, we're gonna make sure you got the funding.
Teresa Fitch, finance director, I just wanted to let you know that engineering and finance had worked together to develop a plan to cover the shortfall. So though this, the financial impact appears like there'll be a shortfall, we have determined that we have an access in seven-one-nine-one-three-three, which is, is the annual infrastructure. So they'll transfer funds to cover the shortfall, should there be any.
What was that project number again?
Seven-one-nine-one-three-three, that's annual reconstruction of infrastructure.
Okay, I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. What if she didn't have money? I'm not moving it. Five zero, twenty-five is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the runway and taxiways rehabilitation project to the airport. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero, twenty-six is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of head Little League for the lease of twenty-four oh four Hawkeye Drive deferred from January twenty-second. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero, twenty-seven is a hearing and resolution approving the lease of Miracle Field to the Miracle League deferred from January eighth and twenty-second. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero, twenty-eight is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Floyd Slow Pitch Softball Association for the lease of thirty-five sixty-two Harbor Drive deferred from January eighth and twenty-second. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero, twenty-nine is a hearing and resolution approving the lease of Ruger Field to Western Iowa Tech Community College deferred from January eighth and twenty-second. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, anyone want to be heard?
Yes, we would like to be heard.
Name and address, please.
Jenny Ammonson, A.M., U.N.D., S.O.N., sixteen oh nine Avery Way.
And Jacob Wondershiden, fifty-six oh, oh, Lyons Court, Sioux City, Iowa. We're both with the Interstate Soccer Club.
And we realize that soccer has been in a transition in the last three years. Interstate Soccer Club is a result of a merger from Tri-State Soccer Club and South Sioux City Soccer Club in order to bring soccer from both communities together. Tri-State had been founded in two thousand and six and South Sioux in nineteen ninety-six, so there is quite a history there. We are a nonprofit, Interstate is a nonprofit, which serves approximately sixteen hundred youth annually, plus the youth that we part with our partners, that we, with an additional two hundred. We manage a minimum of a hundred twenty volunteers annually, and we have a volunteer working board. We provide scholarships for our youth of, of about ten to twelve percent of our membership annually. We provide constructive, positive environment to, for youth to develop their skills to become productive members of society. We think this is all important as we have also partnered productively with WIT in our sub-lease this last year. And we are asking to retain Ruger so we are able to maintain that relationship. Because we do believe that with our, with the kids that we serve and the impact they have on our community, it would be in best interest to everyone if we maintain the lease. And then we would be happy to work with Western Iowa Tech with another sub-lease to fit their needs.
How much did you use the field last year for non-WIT activities?
We used the field Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays as normal for practices, and on that field, Ruger Field, that's what you were asking, were you not? Okay, there was approximately two hundred and fifty kids three times a week. And we use it from as soon as the weather gets good, so in any given year, say the last two, three weeks of March, through when we run out of daylight at the beginning of November.
Matt, you're gonna have to help us a little bit here.
Well, I was gonna say too, my question was, how long have the two of you been involved or on the board or managing the organization?
I, I helped found Tri-State Revolution in two thousand and six, and Tri-State Revolution had the Ruger lease from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twenty-one, when the merger of Tri-State and South Sioux City Soccer Club had taken place. And then Interstate then took that lease over from twenty-one to twenty-three. I have been part of Tri-State and then Interstate since both were, the inception of both, and Jake.
Yep, I joined the board in, in midsummer of twenty twenty-three.
You have the lease on Riverside Fields too?
The Sulan Soccer Foundation does, yes, and then that was the other part of the merger with South Sioux City Soccer Club, Tri-State Revolution, and the Sulan.
But you didn't use those fields last year.
Yes, we did, we used it for our practice as well with, we had to have availability of practice for our.
Travel, travel teams.
Travel teams, as well as availability for our youth, this United League, which has annually of about fourteen, thirteen to fourteen hundred kids. We have to have available.
What, what age kids play out there?
U-six, which would be four to five-year-olds, all the way through, we had practice availability for our, up to our eighteen-year-olds.
But your games are not played there.
Not, not some. We did have some friendlies, which we, that, what that means is we invited another team in, say from Yankton or Norfolk or Lincoln, and we have a day of games.
But it's a real, I was here when we built those fields. And we didn't build it to be practice fields, we built it to be active playing fields, and they were for quite a few years, but now all of those games are in South Sioux.
Right.
It's really not fair to the city of Sioux City, any more than it would be if you took all the games out of, out of South Sioux. But it bothers the heck out of me when I drive by there at night all the time and there's nothing going on there. Knowing what we spent on those fields, that's, that's not a good use of taxpayer dollars. And the same way with Ruger, it didn't get used, after COVID, that thing didn't get used anywhere near like it did before COVID.
And that was because of the, the merger and then, because Tri-State used it exclusively before COVID. And then when the merger took place and there were other, because we had players from both South Sioux City Soccer Club and Tri-State, and the teams merged, so there was practice in both areas. So we still have approximately two hundred and fifty kids using Ruger, which is one field.
But you also have way more than enough fields for practice in Riverside that are not being used on a regular basis. Why can't they go there and practice?
The two hundred and fifty, is that, is that what you're asking? Okay. They, they could. We do, our, our younger kids, the, the two hundred, they, their parents feel safe in that residential area because it's not open. The attention span that younger kids maybe lack is, it, it's a little more contained because there's less distraction at Ruger, because there's not as many cars, of course, going by. The coaches are able to coach a little easier because of the distract, of less distractions at Ruger, and the kids are able to focus better.
With, with the, the merger, the long-term goal is to have Riverside be a host for a, a league for the travel teams. The, since twenty twenty and the transition, we worked really hard with Nebraska League, which is our closest travel league, to be a medium, a meeting spot between several different cities. And that just takes time for that, that to develop. The anticipation, or the, I guess we anticipate that that, those fields would be more weekend fields with our travel teams as we host league games and then tournaments. The weekday leagues for the young kids that aren't in travel are, are at Riverside, and that's what you see a little bit more. But the travel teams need that, that practice space to go at Riverside. There's two hundred young, young, young kids that we talked about that are Ruger, another two hundred and fifty that are on the travel teams that use Riverside when the leagues go on. And the other aspect on why we try to rotate fields is to keep the, the grass and the usage, they don't necessarily get worn out. So if we have fourteen hundred kids that are part of the United League, little kids soccer, and our travel teams all practice at one location, we feel that we would use that, that field up very, very quickly. And it would become very hard to continue to maintain and to practice.
Well, here's where I'm at, I don't know where this is gonna go into. We've done an awful lot of things for Morningside College, I'm not trashing Morningside College. We try to work with Briar Cliff on different things, I don't think we've done as good a job there. And I think we have an obligation to, until WIT can get the program up and running on their campus, we have an obligation to work with them. They're, they're a very important part of our community. They provide a lot of jobs and they provide a lot of education for kids that may not be able to get an education any other way. So I'm, I'm supportive of this. If you guys need the fields, I guess it can work in reverse, you can work with them, and I would hope that they would do that to make sure you have access to those. But I, I want the primary leaseholder to be them, because it's important for me that they, they build their athletic programs, because that's the, what small community colleges are doing now. I mean, that's the way they attract students that they haven't been able to traditionally attract. So that, that's kind of where I'm at, but the rest of you can voice your opinion.
And real quick, the one thing that I think, as, as Alex had kind of indicated, there are several new board members to our club. And I think we have an opportunity to make sure that, that we are good partners, that we work really well with John, Matt and their staff. I believe that we've started on that, that road and have good lines of communication and can continue to make at least our part of our partnership really strong for the city. I believe that, that we can demonstrate in the future what we have going on and make sure that we are reporting to both Matt and his team and to you, what, what else that we're doing to make sure that, if it doesn't look like we're busy, that we are communicating that field use, usage at all the facilities that we have.
I appreciate that. My, both my kids were in your soccer program, not last year, because the year before that, every game and every practice was in South Sioux. And my wife comes from South Sioux, so I'm not talking down to South Sioux at all, but with, with the amount of meetings that we have, there was just no, that, throwing that whole commute into the mix made last year an impossibility. So they had to stop. I think we all can, I think that that's a great avenue. And definitely, you know, track that, show pride in that. We're, we're in Sioux City, we're operating out of parks, we're doing our practices whenever, you know, whenever we have that ability. I, it's really refreshing to hear you want to expand on that, that partnership with them as well, because we've heard in these chambers, when two organizations don't have that mindset and aren't willing to work together, what that can lead to.
Me, I, I'm agreeing with the comments that the mayor made. I understand where you're coming from and how hard that is. I was in the early, some of the early stages of some soccer programs. So I feel for you, but, but I think I'm, I'm agreeing with the mayor on this one. And Parks and Rec staff also recommended Western Iowa Tech for the use of the fields at, at this time, and gave some pretty good reasons why. I don't know if you saw that memo, but gave some good reasons why they were making that recommendation. So, but I appreciate your enthusiasm for the sport, and it, and as Matthew's pointed out, it's just so important for all of the kids that play, and that we have good programs.
I would like to hear, before I make any comments, and Julie can jump in if she would want, just from Western Iowa Tech a little bit, give them an opportunity to speak before I would make any comments, but yeah, thank you for yours.
Troy Jasmine, Vice President of Finance, Western Iowa Tech, forty-six, forty-seven Stone Avenue. Rest assured, we like to partner with everyone in our community, and we will do the best we can to work with every organization here in town. But we have great plans for that field to be used. We are building a soccer field on our campus. Unfortunately, it does take a couple of years to get that finished. We will, we will get that field brought back to where it should be for everyone to play on that field and get the facilities, where the city will be very proud of it.
Troy, I appreciate your comments, and I was gonna ask some questions, some of you have already answered. You're thinking a couple of years is what maybe it will likely take?
We, we've started phase one on our campus, and phase two will start this summer, and then we need to have basically a year to make sure that the turf grass can get ready to be used.
Okay.
That's the three-year lease, so timeframe's good.
Yeah, and I, I agree with the comments the mayor made too about an exciting program. I mean, I, hopefully it's an expanding opportunities for a lot of people, whether it's getting scholarships or introducing them to the sport and bringing them to our community. I appreciate those efforts very much, and, and I would just echo some of those similar things. I would think we wanna make sure you're getting a good start on that while you're building your facility. It'll be ever more important then to be able to work with Interstates in that program, because it seems like there's going to be, you know, a sunset on their use of that field. And one of the things that I would really just encourage you to think about and do is, is the use of that city asset and what you can do to not only showcase it, but I think, moving forward, leave it in great shape for some kiddos that may find themselves at Western Iowa Tech or wherever they will be in the future. But utilizing those fields as well. So I appreciate the investment in the community and, and really would, as I think Matthew maybe have said, that, that just encourage that partnership and coordination, so you can track the usage, prove to city staff. Because I think city staff is, is understanding there was transition and is hopeful for the future, for sure. But unfortunately, that transition has resulted in some lags and, and some, some things that were missed opportunities where it really could have bettered the sport. And so I think that working, Troy, with you and your team and providing that stability out there and then allowing them to coordinate with city staff, especially out of Riverside, could be a win-win and just see where that pipeline goes in the future.
Right. So Troy, to be clear, so you're saying after three years or. So Troy, to be clear, so you're saying after three years, or when the program on the campus is up and running, you won't need those fields like you do?
Not necessarily. We are looking at adding a junior varsity as well, so as far as having some practice facilities, as well as the field on our campus, with both men's and women's, uh, there will be a need for, uh, that facility as well.
Okay. I, I, yeah, I wondered about that, but I do take you at your word that you will work with Interstate, uh, Soccer Association to, to build really a solid program.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's, you've always been community-minded. I know your history and-
Yep.
And I know their history too, so it's-
And Dr. Merle's had to make sure you guys knew that, uh, he, he's right behind this.
And what better opportunity to show the youth in our city that they can go to college at WIT and still play soccer, the game that they love. So that partnership should be mutually beneficial.
On thinking about camps and other things that Churchill will work on and everything skills pool.
Maybe enough.
I know that Morningside and other schools do that as well, so.
Show that interaction, mentorship.
Anyone else be heard?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing is closed.
I hope you're still encouraged, very much so. I, I would be too if it were, if it were me.
Passes five zero thirty, is resolution adopting a policy for payment of electric services at city ball fields leased with concession facilities and rescinding resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine eighteen eight-two. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero thirty-one, is a hearing and resolution approving the proposal to sell a vacated portion of the drainage right-of-way adjacent to thirty-six seventeen West Fourth Street Circle. The petitioner is Mark Sorensen, Jr. Somebody else will have to move that? Move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry. Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four to, uh, zero to one, I abstain, conflict of interest. Thirty-two is resolution accepting, conflict of interest, I didn't just abstain. Thirty-two is resolution accepting a permanent ingress, egress, access to the stormwater drainage system facilities easement with Mark Sorensen, Jr. For property adjacent to thirty-six seventeen West Fourth Street Circle. I'll move that, I can't move that, I'm sorry.
I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you for bringing these forward.
Okay, move it.
Second.
Passes five zeros, anybody opposed waiving statutory rule?
No.
If not, I'll move that.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Second, third, I'll move it.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Thirty-four is a resolution authorizing the fire chief to fill vacate, vacant EMT paramedic and lead paramedic positions with the firefighter positions through attrition and, or retirements. It's been deferred from January twenty-second. Motion's requested to defer this item until February twelfth. I'll move that.
Second.
I would appreciate if you guys deferred this, uh, till next week. I've been working with the unions and on some of the concerns that I heard, um, putting a proposal together. Um, I had, the firefighters are on board. I thought ASME was on board, but I believe that they may have backed out of that. Um, so I'm continuing to work with them, and then I'd like to meet with you guys individually to talk about where we're at.
I, I just have one thing. I did do a, a lot of research in a week that I didn't have a lot of time, but it was important to me. The one concern that I have, no matter what system you go to, and Dubuque solved it by making, what, what the union said is not exactly the truth, not saying they're, not everybody's moving towards this, by the way. Iowa City and Cedar Rapids aren't moving towards this at all, but the one that, that Dubuque requires everyone to be a paramedic, and so my concern is, I know how this system works. When you don't have enough paramedics, they'll be downtown, and they'll be in parts of Morningside, but other areas may not have a paramedic on that rig if you don't have enough paramedics. So somehow, we have to get to a minimum paramedic level to make sure that when a person has a heart attack on the north side or riverside, they have the same chance to live as a person in downtown. And I don't know what that number is, but I, but I'm, I'm not, that's not necessarily part of this Manning discussion, but that's really important to me that, that somehow we figure that out.
I appreciate that, Mayor. It is important. Um, a lot of people don't know that we run, um, paramedic first response, so every engine and truck has a paramedic, um-
But if you don't require your firefighters to have that, and you-
Right, right. So they could drop down. Um, so we are looking at, through the hiring process, requiring that as a condition of employment, that licensure, so we are looking into that.
Okay, because that was a big deal. Dubuque went to that system so that no matter who's on that rig-
Someone.
Someone is a paramedic.
Des Moines is the same.
Oh, okay, is it? I don't-
Yep.
Okay. Well, that, that, that was something that, that I know we don't have. That really caught my attention.
It, they're hard, hard to find, to hire, obviously. That's kind of why we're here. And so, for example, like what Des Moines does is, they're hired without it, they're hired with an EMT, um, and then after their year of probation, they have one more year to attain that-
That's a Dubuque-
And that's a condition of their employment.
That's Dubuque's model, too.
I think that's a really good model. Um, the mayor and I just had a sidebar conversation about it one day, and, um, well, Saturday when we were here, and I would agree with that, to have a paramedic on every shift, every time, you know, they go out at that level, because it, there is a difference, you know? We have to give them the credit for their expertise, right? And maybe that gets built into this agreement, that there will be paramedics, you know, and continued.
Rest assured, we have, I, one thing I want to be clear on-
You do have them.
We have plenty right now, uh, out there in all the stations-
Right.
And, and on all the AM-
Right, then that, that continues.
But we want to make sure that continues.
Right.
Right.
Right, so that that is somewhere, you know, in the agreement that that will be maintained. So it does keep that kind of career open, too, for someone who wants to go above EMT level, because they enjoy it as long as they're going to be a firefighter with it. So I kind of like that as well. I think that's a good, happy medium.
Hopefully you can get everyone on board and-
I'm trying. I'm working at it.
Supportive of it.
Came up with a compromise that I thought, um, everybody was on board with, a little bit of waffling here at the end of last week, so I'm trying to get together with everybody and make sure that we're, sometimes everybody won't agree, but we're just, you know, gonna have to make it as good as we can, address the concerns I heard from, from you guys.
I, I will say, so not last Thursday, but Thursday prior to that, the Human Rights Commission, um, was involved with a, a partner event that they did down at the museum on human trafficking in Sulan. After that, I was driving home, and, um, obviously there was a, there was a call due to the, the car accident that happened. There was a firefighter administering CPR, first on scene.
Absolutely.
Um, and obviously, that story does not have a happy ending, but it was a firefighter that was there, and so I, I want to dispel that firefighters are, are not as good. Um, obviously, the training differs a little bit, and I, I appreciate that you're looking into that. I'm not inherently against what was, what was being proposed, but I, I think there were some concerns, and I'm, I'm really glad that you are involving both sides, uh, both unions. I know that's a lot of shouting to have at one table, but, but I think what you're, what you're working for is something that we can all be a little bit more comfortable with, so.
And I think both sides won't get everything, uh, but we'll, we'll land somewhere in the middle that works for the citizens.
Chief?
Thank you.
Real fast, will you give your name and position for the-
Yeah, I'm Everett Fire Chief, Sioux-
Thank you.
Fire rescue.
Voting electronically on the deferral?
No.
Okay.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Any citizen concerns? Seeing none, we'll go to Matthew.
Nothing, nothing this week.
Okay, Julie?
Wow, um, I don't have a whole lot for this, or it's Black History Month. Martin Luther King Junior Day, um, trying to think of what's coming up. Valentine's Day is coming up, so I'm sure there's lots of local restaurants that would appreciate you taking your best friend, or your best partner, or your husband, wife, spouse, out to dinner to spur our local economy, so please do so if you're able. That's all I have.
Do they have to be the same?
Don't mix them up.
Alex.
Um, I just wanted to, just wanted to thank city staff for all of their hard work, um, and battling through a lot of, uh, snowstorms and everything. I know with the weather, things are fine, starting to clear up, um, but it's been, it's been, hm, what, a, a tough road to hoe would just be probably, like, pun intended, that it's like, yeah, no kidding, but I, in addition to streets and trying to keep, do their best to keep that, um, clear and everything moving so that traffic and everyone can get around, I also wanted to recognize inspection services. Um, I contacted Daryl, the head of inspections, to talk about where we're at, because one of the things I hear in our community or people are frustrated with is that, you know, we're not enforcing the ordinances that we have. We have these ordinances in place that say, move your vehicle, and then we see vehicles sitting somewhere for a long time, or they make complaints about different sidewalks and don't see anything being done. So I just wanted to add a little bit of context and some numbers that Daryl shared with me. Um, there were actually, the numbers were that there were one thousand one hundred and twenty-two inspections made for snow complaints on sidewalks. Um, a member of his team actually went out and investigated four hundred and thirty-two snowbound vehicle complaints, and the PD did an extra one hundred and ten. Um, out of those, uh, fifty-four actually escalated to the point that we had to call the tow truck to tow them. Um, the others were taken care of. Uh, also, in addition to that, so if homeowners or property owners don't take care of their property, we have contractors that we work with that actually go out and clear that, and then we assess the property owner, uh, for that and bill them, and a total of nearly twenty-two thousand dollars worth of work was done. I would just really encourage our, um, our citizens to take that seriously. We need to be able to move the snow. We need to make sure there's a safe passage so that people aren't going out on the streets, um, and then just encourage people to do so. Um-
What our speed limit zone will be to the access to the water park, um, if it's forty-five or greater, I might have serious concerns about that, but I guess I don't know. We're gonna have turn lanes and some other-
Yes, it's fifty-five now. It does have to go down.
Yeah, well, four, eh, fifty-five, yeah, so fifty-five, it's really sixty-five, and forty-five would be fifty-five, that kind of thing.
Sure, we're gonna do an engineering report and say eighty-five percent of the people drive at sixty now, so we can only lower it to fifty-five.
We, we, yeah, but I know we use public safety as, as top priority, but when you have kids going to a water park and parents and grandparents taking the kids and other public transportation, we have got to really control that speed limit and enforce it. That's all I have.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?